Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to get this October 8th City Council meeting to order here at 7:30. Would everybody please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Judy, would the clerk please call roll?
Cannon.
Here.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Veneziano.
Here.
Basassi.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Sanoyka.
Here.
With seven present and nobody absent, there is a quorum. And therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Therefore, we can go ahead and move forward to approving City Council minutes. The first order of business for these would be the September 17th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Alderman Budmats has made it. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall those minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. The next set of minutes are for September 24th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Budmats has made it. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Diastis has seconded the motion. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these City Council minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Those meeting minutes are approved. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to deviate for public hearings on the Library Fiscal Year 2020 Budget and on the city's fiscal year 2020 budget. Is there a motion to deviate? So, thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Budmats, for the second. We'll change it up a little bit. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will now deviate from the agenda, starting with the public hearing for the Library Fiscal Year 2020 Budget. The City Council is scheduled to hold a public hearing on the Library's fiscal year 2020 budget. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning the Library fiscal year 2020 budget. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at, I have 7:33 on October 8th, 2019. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the Library's fiscal year 2020 budget? I will hold the floor open for a bit of awkward silence should nobody come up, but the floor is open for anyone who wishes to come up. Seeing nobody wishes to come up, let the record show that the public hearing will be closed at 7:33 on October 8th, 2019. The next item is the public hearing for City Fiscal Year 2020 budget. The City Council is again scheduled to hold a public hearing on the City Fiscal Year 2020 budget. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments for interested citizens concerning the city's fiscal year 2020 budget. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at 7:34 on October 8th, 2019. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding the City Fiscal Year 2020 budget? Again, the floor will remain open should anybody wish to speak on the city's fiscal Okay, we will let the record show that the public hearing closed at 7:35 on October 8th, 2019. Is there a motion to close the floor?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. All those in favor of closing the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That moves us on to the mayor's report, and I just want to make a couple of quick items of mention that we did participate in the city's meet and greet a couple of weekends ago. It was the last city market. The weather held out for the most part. It was a little dreary right in the beginning, and then the weather broke a little bit, and the rain held at bay, and then the rain came back later on in the afternoon, just about the time of close. But it was a good time. There were a lot of people in conversation. I arrived a little bit late. I will not mention the doctor's facility that deals with bones and joints in Illinois, but the appointment was at 9:15, and I didn't get out there until 20 after 10:00. But anyway, it was a great time had by everybody. Also got to participate in the Barker Avenue Bridge ribbon-cutting ceremony. Alderman Diastis was in attendance as well. That bridge is actually really nice aesthetically. They did a good job in making it look well. A lot of work was done on the aprons and to the edges of the creek, so it was interesting to hear a little bit about that. Most recently, the hoedown this weekend. I think this was the first hoedown where there wasn't any rain until the complete end, and so it was phenomenal for that regard. Great attendance, good turnout. People were extremely happy also about not having the rain. Those who attended, you know, consecutive year after year and recognized the lack of rain. So again, I appreciate everybody's support and assistance and participation in making it what it was, so thank you to the staff and volunteers. There was also the duck race that was postponed, but also took place at that time. That was interesting. It was fun. I've never seen so many ducks swim so slowly, but it was great. Kudos to Alderman O'Brien. I understand there's a bit of a victory involved in there. Congrats. And then this morning, most recently, the Kimball Hill 6th grade class had invited me to participate in a leadership initiative and discussion about what makes a leader, and 6th graders being the top of the class are leaders, and they are going to be great leaders one day. With that, are there any ward reports? Alderman Sanoyka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items that I would like to report on. The first being that residents living along West Frontage Road of running Route 53 requested that the city inquire under the process of building a sound barrier between the residences and the highway to decrease the amount of traffic noise. The second is residents of the Northern Street of Jody Court requested that the flooding between their properties and Brookwood condominiums be brought back for discussion, given the topic was abandoned in 2017 without resolution. Lastly, many residents approached me over the past couple of weeks asking when the backyard hen license applications will be available. They emphasized that they understand it takes time to set up a process, and they want the process to be set up well. Residents have stated that they are willing to wait to ensure staff have the time they need to set up a thorough process, but are asking for a launch date so that they can adequately plan their flock strategy, which will impact their plans on whether to adopt flocks from friends or rescue agencies or start from scratch. So if the city could provide a date range on that item, that would be most appreciative for the residents of the seventh ward.
Anything further?
No, those three items.
Thank you. Are there further ward reports to Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of issues I just would like to talk about briefly. Have some good news after waiting for four years. Cook County finally graciously came out and cleaned a little bit of Quinton for those who haven't been following my complaints over the years. There's been, the median strip out there is literally falling apart. It's also falling apart on Euclid, and there's big chunks of concrete on the street constantly. So they actually spent about a half a day and cleaned off some of it, so I'd say they got about half of it gone. But I guess what I would offer for the press that covers our city, instead of worrying about chickens going forward, maybe they could go out there and take a look at the potholes that haven't even been touched this year on Quinton, and look at the rocks and stones and pieces of concrete on Euclid that are just sitting there waiting to be a disaster. I think it would offer a good story for them and maybe push the county to start taking care of the people who pay their bills. The second issue, Mr. Mayor, was I had two residents in my ward call me specifically about this issue, and I didn't know how to answer them. And the question they both asked, and one asked that I would actually bring it up at the meeting, is since you've been mayor for five years, or for five months, excuse me, there's a number of vacancies available on a couple of commissions, and they were wondering when those will be filled. And I told them, I know one was being filled tonight. I have no idea what the answer is on the rest of them, so maybe you could fill us in on that either later on today or whenever you have time.
Sure, I appreciate that. You can let the resident know that they are in process, and should they know of other individuals who are willing to volunteer their time, there are still vacancies, and vacancies are available, so they can step on them.
Great, thanks.
They're being filled. Further comments? Ward reports from you, Alderman Cannon?
Oh, no, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Then Alderman O'Brien.
Sure, just real quickly, following your mayor's report is, just wanted to pass along the compliments. Several residents reached out to me to pass along the compliments for the City Council meet and greet at the last city market. And about three of them that had reached out were wondering if that could be done more often, is maybe twice a year, maybe at the holiday tree lighting ceremony or something else, is that they just said it was very well received from the ones that were able to attend, so they just wanted me to put out there if it could possibly be done maybe twice a year.
Thank you for bringing that up. We are actually, last week, City Manager Crumstock and I are looking at the beginning of June at the first farmer's food truck market, farmer's market, and then at the end, like we did here.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. Any more ward reports at this time? Seeing none, then we can move on to the next item, which would be opening the floor to the public for 20 minutes. Should there be any signatures on the sign-in sheet? However, there aren't any signatures, so we will move forward to pending ordinances. The first pending ordinance, number 19-43, is amend Division 2 entitled Rules of Procedure of Article 2 entitled Counsel of Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows by adding there to Section 2-114 entitled Attendance at Meetings by Means Other Than Physical Presence Remote Attendance. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Mr. Alderman Budmats, and thank you, Mr. Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
No.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Next up is Resolution Number 19-R-97, approve change order number one for the HVAC Control Systems Phase 2 for City Hall postponed at September 10th and September 24th City Council meeting. Request to postpone until November 12th, 2019 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to postpone this resolution?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be postponed until November 12th, 2019? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and no one opposed, this resolution is postponed. The next item on the agenda is the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of two items, Items C and D. Does any Alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Alderman Diastis?
Item D.
Item D, okay. So that now leaves one item. Ms. Wolf, should I just take these individually then, as they stand?
Yes.
Okay. So that leaves the first, Item C, ordinance number 19-00, approve tax levy abatement. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Diastis, for the second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward. The next item is ordinance number 19-00, amend Section 2-53, censure or expulsion of an Alderman first reading. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward? Alderman?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Diastis made it. Is there a second? Alderman O'Brien, is there any discussion? Alderman Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to amend and replace the word Alderman wherever it appears, and replace it with the words elected or appointed officials.
Is there a?
I'll second.
I would second.
Okay, wonderful. So we have a second. So the question is to amend this. Is there, is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, Alderman Budmats?
Question, does this present any legal issues for us?
This, no, that doesn't present any legal issues except for the fact that this applies to only City Council meetings, so any elected or appointed official would be an elected or appointed official of the City Council. Okay, that's fine.
Further questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
No.
With six in favor and one opposed, that does move forward on the amendment. Now we have to go back and have a vote on the entire item as it stands, 19-00. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this will be moved forward for second reading. Next up is new business, and that is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for October 8th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. That brings us right on to the consent resolutions, and it consists of six items at this time, Items F through K. Does any Alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Veneziano?
F and H.
F and H. Are there others?
J.
J, for Alderman Cannon. Any others from any other Alderman? Seeing none, then that now leaves three items for consideration in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Sorry?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Thank you, Alderman Basassi. Beginning with G, Resolution Number 19-R-104, appoint Freedom of Information Officer and Open Meetings Officer. Item I, Resolution Number 19-R-106, award contract to National Power Riding Corporation for sanitary sewer manhole lining. And K, Resolution Number 19-R-108, approve professional design engineering services contract for the Lot 5 Drainage Improvement Project and to waive the formal bidding process for the construction of the project. The question is, shall the three resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. Circling back to line item F, Alderman Veneziano, you had pulled this. This is Resolution Number 19-R-103, authorize execution of a contract with Dakra Tack LLC for the city citation and adjudication software. Can I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Can I have a second? Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Why don't you go ahead with the first bite for pulling this?
So, a couple of questions on this. One was my question, and then a couple from residents that I got back. So a resident wanted to know what to explain some of the benefits of this Dakra program. It said that it would enable us to benefit, and it had those benefits broken out, and they wanted to know why we needed those benefits.
I hope I can answer those. Right now, we use an antiquated paper ticket system, so by going electronically, which we actually did on our crash reporting, it definitely saves time. It reduces officer violator contact. It's a quicker process. Also, it will be a time savings. We're currently, with paper tickets, they then go through our records department, they then do dual entry and enter all that data again into like spreadsheets and so forth. With going to electronic ticket, like I said, it's really the way of the future. It is going to save time and eventually actually save money, and also increase officer safety. Hope that answers that question.
Is there further discussion on this item?
The second question, there was the breakdown of a tier system for cost. What is your anticipated tier system do you think that we will be at?
We would be at first tier, because the citations, we write a couple of thousand a year, so we will not, my estimate is we probably about 18,000 a year total. And with that too comes electronic overnight parking permission, where people can now go online and request parking on the street. That'll avoid some of the, like I said, dual entries, officers having to write it down on notebooks and basically scratch pads, so there's a lot of benefits to the system.
Thanks, Chief. Is there further discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats, and then Alderman O'Brien.
I spoke with Melissa. She told me that the contract that we are looking at will be revised so that the auto-renew provision will not be applied to us, and that it would just be a two-year contract, and then it would come before us again when that two-year term expires.
Thank you. Is there any necessity to include that verbiage in any way? Is that where you're getting at, or no?
To best of my knowledge, no.
No. The resolution will authorize the approval of the contract as, with the amendments as stated.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
And this might be more for, I know Manager Crumstock's not here, but I saw, Chief, one of the big advantages is it does integrate with ERP systems that the city's moving to. I'm guessing we know it will integrate with the ERP system we've selected. Is that right? I see Melissa nodding yes.
Yes, it will.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to go with another ERP system, but we're not the same one. Thank you.
We did verify. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the item? Seeing none, the question is, will this Resolution Number 19-R-103 be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Basassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. Continuing on to line item H, Resolution Number 19-R-105, authorize purchase of fire department structural firefighting gear, SFFG. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Veneziano. Thank you, Alderman Diastis, for the second. Alderman Veneziano, you had pulled this one. You're up.
So this is actually a residence question. What is structural firefighting gear?
That would be the coat and pant ensemble that all the crews wear to go into fight fires.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this item? Wonderful. Seeing none, the question is, shall this Resolution Number 19-R-105 be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that resolution is adopted. And that now brings us to line item J, Resolution Number 19-R-107, award a contract for road salt alternative de-icing materials for winter 2019 and 2020. Is there a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Basassi. Alderman Cannon, you had asked to have this pulled.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would ask the council to consider something for the future. You know, every year, we put a ton of salt down in the street, both liquid and the pellets. I know on my own street, sometimes by the end of winter, it actually looks white. It doesn't even look like dark anymore. On top of that, because of all the salt we put down, we pollute the water, pollute the water system and on the sewers and all that. So I would, I would offer the idea of possibly trying to, you know, we have, we have a way of calibrating our trucks to reduce the amount of salt that goes out every day, and I would ask that we consider strongly like a 10% reduction in the amount of salt and chemical we put on the street. I'm not asking for anything to impede safety and everything, but I think I can, I am not an expert at this, but I watched them do my street for 25 years, and they put an incredible amount of salt down, and then when they go out, they knock half of it off the street. It doesn't even stay on the street because it
They saved money from the reduction of salt and use that leftover savings to purchase sensors to put in the roads that now detect real-time icing conditions and then they ice only as needed based on that. So that's an avenue to think toward. Thank you. Is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, the question is, shall this Resolution Number 19-R-107 be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Basassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. That brings the council on to other business and reports. And at this time, I was approached, Alderman Cannon, by a resident, Mr. Doug Duval, to volunteer his time as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He has since provided some of his background, both personally and professionally. It's included in the city council's packet. I did feel that he would be a beneficial value and as a result, we are now looking for an appointment of him this evening. And as a result, I'd like to have a motion to move his appointment forward. Thank you, Alderman Cannon.
Second, second.
Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Basassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, Mr. Doug Duval is now a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Congratulations, Mr. Doug Duval. Beyond that, there are not any mayor's proclamations this evening. Are there any city clerks report?
No, there isn't.
Thank you. This would now bring us to city staff reports. First item, community items of interest. Ms. Gallagher, I believe you're taking over for Manager Crumstock this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Topics to mention tonight, we've got several. Thank you to everyone who attended the Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation fundraiser at Grande Jake's Authentic Mexican Grill at 5500 New Wilkie Road on Wednesday, October 2nd. Also, a thank you to all those residents, volunteers, and friends of Rolling Meadows who have participated in the annual hometown hoedown in Fall Fest that was conducted on Saturday, October 5th. Thank you to everyone who also attended the same day on October 5th, Public Works Document and Electronic Recycling Event. The city would also like to thank all of those who made it to this year's rescheduled duck race conducted on Saturday, October 5th during the hometown hoedown. On Saturday, October 12th, the fire department will be conducting an open house from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the New Crans Fire Station located at 2455 Plum Grove Road. On Thursday, October 24th, from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., State Representative Tom Morrison in partnership with the Palatine Township Senior Citizens Council will be conducting a free senior fair at the Palatine Senior Center and they are located at 505 South Quentin Road in Palatine. Please call for information at area code 847-202-6584. Thursday, October 31st is Halloween, so Halloween trick or treat hours in the city are from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And if your child collects a treat that you have concerns about, please dispose of that item in the city's candy disposal container to be located at, in the front of City Hall. Monday, November 4th, early refuse set out begins. Place refuse at the curb note earlier than 3:00 p.m. that day prior to pickup, the day prior to pickup. And as a friendly reminder, please, with leaves falling, just to have residents not to dump or blow them into the streets or down the sewers. The Rolling Meadows Police Department and the DEA or Drug Enforcement Administration has scheduled another National Prescription Drug Takeback Day for Saturday, October 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the City Hall parking lot at 3600 Kirchhoff Road. This is a great opportunity for those who've missed the previous events or who have subsequently accumulated unwanted, unused prescription drugs. Pills only, no sharps or liquids. And also, this will help dispose of those medications safely. For information or if you have a concern, please contact Chief John Nowacki at area code 847-394-8500. Have you seen the electronic October News and Views or E-News? And if not, please visit www.citerm.org and click on News and Views tab. This is the sister publication to the printed newsletter. Some of the October topics include the city earning the third consecutive distinguished budget award, new ladder truck enters fire department service, the 2020 census data to drive public and private sector decisions, city dedicates bike path extension, and the new hangout joins the local cafe scene. And those are the topics to mention for tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. Seeing as how we're in the swing of it, we have the October 15th Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda to help us with that area as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So next week is the October 15th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting at 7:30 p.m. There are six items on the agenda. First item is fiscal year 2020 budget for the library. The next item is fiscal year 2020 budget for the city. The Chipper Service Chipper Week is the number three item. G1 Ordinance Amendment Part 3. Then the Billboards Part 2 is the number five item. And then the sixth item is 2020 Community Events.
Wonderful. And for Win, Play, Show, October 22nd, 2019 City Council Draft Agenda.
Moving right along.
Right.
The October 22nd Draft Agenda is in the packet. That's at 7:30 p.m. on October 22nd. Several ordinances are under pending, the approved tax levy abatement. We have an amend the alcohol liquor code to approve a Class G1 liquor license for video gaming for Bigby's Porthouse located at 1649 Algonquin Road. Under consent ordinances, we have two, property tax levy for the library first reading and approve the property tax levy for the city first reading. We also have the bills for approval on the warrant for 1022. We have seven consent resolutions. I'll generally just go through those quickly. Authorize agreement with community consolidated school district number 15, use of facilities during emergency disaster. Next item is authorize agreement with Township High School District 211, use of facilities during emergency disaster. The next item is authorize webber drive Phase 1 engineering services. Next item is authorize purchase of end of year snow ice control road salt. Moving on then to the approved release of closed session minutes and destruction of tapes. Then authorize Brookview Sunset sanitary sewer engineering services. And the last resolution would be the accept subrecipient agreement of the 2019 Cook County Community Development Block Grant. And then also, we have our routine items, community items of interest, September 2019